Welcome. This service is provided by FreeConferenceCall.com. Please enter your access code.
All right. Good morning. Welcome to the October Board meeting of Arkansas State Board of Education on a crisp fall morning. I'm glad everybody made it. Dr. Hill is, should be here in just a few minutes. On the agenda, I do want to let the board and public know that down in the action items for this morning, item five, the Cameron case, has been pulled from this month's agenda, it may appear in the future. So, just to let everybody know that that one is, is not going to be considered today. Does anyone over here have any consent items that you'd like?
I have questions on nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. That, that the only one? Nineteen, okay. Any, anyone else over here? Ms. Smith-Fetrich, you good?
I thought number twelve was pulled because the trial was paid as our.
Yes, I'm sorry. Good, good catch, yes. Tw- I want to be, be sure we got the right number. Number, item twelve was pulled. The consent, okay. So, twelve in the consent agenda. Yes, you're, you're exactly right, Ms. Fetterich. That happened a few days ago and I have since then. Anybody, Ms. Oak, did you have anything else?
I've had some questions on number three.
Okay. Anybody, anybody here? Dr. Moore, anybody else? Okay. Okay, then let's go to item three on the consent agenda. Ms. Oak?
I think it, it's troubling that we are granting to the co-ops, non-special ed licensed people who are the people who go out into the schools and work with the, with the school districts. And I guess my question is, what kind of criteria do you look at before you do the granting of those special ed? When it's a non-licensed person than a co-op?
Hi, Ms. Jacks.
Yes, Melissa Jacks, licensure. We've now created professional development that someone has to do before they are approved for a long-term sub or for an ALP. And so, these people will have had to have that before they were granted that. They are probably in the preschool setting, and teachers in a preschool setting, not the actual LEAs and people that work with the school districts.
Okay, and the second question is, at the Centers for Youth, and the person that was approved there was an art teacher? And typically, in art education, you are, you don't have any human growth and development courses, and so, help me understand why that was approved?
And the same reason that they could not find a special ed teacher, and so, they were allowed to put one on, a waiver, and, but they, we do have that professional development before they, within seven days of entering the classroom.
Okay, and this may be a question that Learning Services needs to answer, but for those teachers who, for example, there's one in McGee that is a secondary business teacher, but they're going to be assigned to a third grade reading class, and I wondered if they would be getting the science of reading training? I know, right now, we're focusing on K two, and this is a third grade teacher, but nonetheless, there, there are still, we're still teaching reading in third grade, so.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Yeah, so do you not, is that something you check on with Learning Services to see, oh, there she is. I couldn't, I looked in the wrong place?
Good morning, Smith. Good morning, Stacy Smith, Learning Services. And so, any teacher teaching in a classroom for third grade has, is going to have to demonstrate proficiency in the science of reading, so they're going to be required to go through that professional development.
Okay, but just may not have been yet because we're still trying to get the, uh, K two, okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay, okay, and let's go down to item nineteen. This is an item that comes back, some additional data came back to us after a question by Ms. Oak last month, and I'll turn it to Ms. Newton.
My question is probably for someone in the charter office instead of the school district. One of the things I noticed that is that their elementary teachers, it said that hundred percent were on track, were on pathway to certification. But then when you go to the high school, it said that zero percent of their waiver teachers were on a pathway to certification. In some of the core areas, math and social studies, over half of their teachers were on a waiver. And my, and then I looked at the details, they had several teachers, this was their third year to be on a waiver, several were two, and then a few, this was their first year. How long can a district hire the same teacher for that position on a waiver? And on ALP, they have three years and they have to be making progress. Are there any, any, is there any requirements for tho- those teachers to be making progress toward gaining skills that they need?
Well, in the past, Kelly McLaughlin, Charter School Office, in the past, we have not had any mandates from our office that they have to get, that they have to be enrolled in an education prep program. However, most of the districts now are really requiring or strongly encouraging all of their waiver teachers to enroll in a prep program. Because most of these school districts have this waiver for a five-year, many, many of them may take that time period to, to finish their program and pass the praxis.
So, but if a, a district wanted to hire a teacher, say, in year one of their waiver, they could have that same teacher for five years, and that teacher could be making no progress toward gaining skills, and we don't have anything that we can encourage or, or, there's nothing that we can do? Is that what's happening?
That may be illegal, I don't know.
I, I don't think.
Um, Abby, for Deputy Commissioner, um, the, it would depend on what they're teaching. So, under a waiver from licensure, they would still need to meet the Arkansas Qualified Teacher Requirements if they're teaching in a core content area. So, that would at least require them to have a demonstration of the content knowledge needed for teaching in that core content area. But by the very nature of having the waiver from licensure and having that ability under, under our waiver process, if the district doesn't agree within their 1240 waiver, that their goal is to put these teachers on a pathway towards licensure, then there is nothing that would require them to do that. But those Arkansas Qualified Teacher Requirements do raise that level for our core content areas and require the content knowledge.
I'm just thinking that this might be something that we might want to think about in the future if they're given that waiver, at least making some progress toward certification each year, I think would be a great idea.
And under the 1240 process, as you know, those are just arrangements that the district brings forward. I do think what Ms. McLaughlin said is important, that we've seen more and more districts say, this is what we want for our students anyway. But again, not that tight requirement.
It was just concerning to me when you see over half of the teachers in a such core subject area on these waivers, and there's no progress at all being made toward certification in that district.
My question on number nineteen is, if, if we, if the district has granted 1240 waiver, and we see that their use of that waiver is not, in our opinion, based on data, as working with the achievement that it's supposed to for students, do we have any recourse? Can we pull it back? Can we call them back in front of us? Because I know in open enrollment charters, that it, we get to look at the, their things that's going on there all the time. So, do we have that same freedom or legal right to do that with districts that get 1240 waivers?
Well, I think based on the law, we, once we allow that three-year period, one-year period, whatever that period of time is, I don't know that we have a recourse. We are requesting these reports, and based on, on your request on how it's affecting student growth, school growth, student achievement, how it's affecting the staff and the teachers, this is how we are discovering what schools are moving forward and with enroll, making sure that there's, their teachers are enrolled in a, in a prep program. But to my knowledge, we don't have a recourse.
I think, Ms. Oak, I think the State Board can obviously ask them to come before the State Board at any time to discuss their progress. But I think Ms. McLaughlin is right regarding, once you grant the waiver, I don't know that there's anything in the law that lets you rescind the waiver. And Lori, can you nod that you confirm, you're confirming that's correct? Okay. So, there's nothing that we're, where we could actually rescind that.
Okay, so, in the, because these, this was in the first wave when we were all still learning about 1240 waivers. If they agree and we negotiate with them, we can negotiate numbers of years, or if they show progress, or if the teacher do, if they, if we negotiate that and that becomes part of the waiver. Is that like it is when you have charters and conversion charters where the presentation is a negotiation between the approvers and those receiving approval?
Yes, I know that Helena West Helena has a required yearly report. Not every school district that we've granted waivers to has that, but, so that you will get this information, this update every year on their school district. So, it would be my thinking that.
And theirs is a three-year waiver, correct? These, all of these are three years, or are they five? Are they five?
I believe they were five years at the time that they were granted.
And the specific question I had last month on Helena West Helena is whether or not the, the elementary grade teachers are, have, is that a RISE school? Are they going through the RISE training?
Would you like the district personnel, they are here to speak?
Okay. We haven't met the new superintendent, so this is good.
So, welcome, and, um, Ms. Freino, should we swear these individuals, or are they just reporting?
Lori Freino, Department of Education. No, I don't think you would swear these individuals, they're just here to report.
Great. Welcome, everyone, and just identify your, your name for the record.
Good morning to all. My name is Linda English, and I am the interim superintendent for the Helena West Helena School District.
Good morning, I'm Jewel Hamilton. I am the principal at J.F. Wall, pre-K through six, Elementary Campus.
Good morning, I'm Randy Rotundo. I'm the Curriculum and Testing District Coordinator.
Good morning, Joyce Anderson, Professional Development Coordinator for the Helena West Helena School District.
Great. Thank you all for driving over today. Ms. Oak, you want to?
Yes, it would probably be for you in that I was wondering if your teachers are participating, or how many have been trained in the science of reading?
Yes, they are participating. I have grades K one, two, and, K one and two, and some three. Those teachers that are teaching literacy, they have been in the program. They started in that summer program, I think about two years ago, and they follow up with the next year, and then they also follow up with the co-op. I have a third grade.
And the ones on the waiver as well?
No.
If you could get a little closer to the microphone.
Okay, question.
And the ones that you have waivers for who may be highly qualified but not licensed, are they going, the K one, two, and some three, are they going through the training also?
Okay, they're doing the training that is on the, online, that's required, the science of reading. All of the teachers are, have started with those modules that have been introduced on the ID, on Arkansas Ideas. They're all committed to taking those. Only had one of those K one and two, those teachers were asked, when the program initiative first began, they were asked to be a part, so we selected three. So, they started a little bit earlier, but the others do know that they have to participate, and they are taking those courses.
And is this your first year as principal, or?
No, not my first year principal, I've been a principal.
No, I mean, in this school.
In this.
In this particular district?
No, I've been in this district the whole time.
Okay.
But we recently consolidated from pre-K three to now the campus is a pre-K six campus, so that's the difference.
We were fortunate enough as a board to get to meet in your district a few years ago, so we're, we're sort of familiar with your buildings and all of that. Are, have, have you begun to see results, in a, in a positive results, from those students who are being taught by teachers who have that training?
Yes, it has been very helpful with them, and we can look at the, their literacy. They do understand the teaching of the literacy, so it has been helpful. They do need more training, and that's what we're looking for, more instructional support.
Thank you so much. And it's nice to meet the interim superintendent.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's great to be here this morning. Thank you.
Were there any additional questions?
Ms. English, do you have anything to add about the, the progress that your teachers are making towards certification that you got this?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I do. We have been working closely with licensure, Ms. Melissa Jacks, Sandra Hurst. They will be at the co-op on November the first. One of the things we are very vigilant in the Helena West Helena School District to make sure that those teachers that are at 1240 waivers, that they do become licensed. For example, Ms. Hamilton's building, we have eight teachers that are on waivers. Seven of those teachers are committed to a path career program. We have one that will start in January. At the secondary level, we'll be working vigilantly to get those teachers certified. We do have teachers, we have thirteen at the high school. They are committed to enroll in those programs. Ms. Jacks and Ms. Hurst will be at the Great Rivers Education Co-op on November the first. We want to make sure that those teachers understand that they will be placed in a pathwise, in a path program, because we want our students to have certified teachers in those classrooms.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for, for, for driving over, very helpful, and for the additional data that was requested. We appreciate your responsiveness.
Thank you. If you need to, let us know, we will provide it. Thank you.
Great, great, great. Um, I do want to, and I don't want, not, not y'all's case, but the kind of the general, and this is for Ms. Freino. I, I do think, you know, this Act 1240, the breadth of these waivers, and I just want to come back to the State Board's kind of powers and duties, broad powers and duties that are in 611-105, that, that there's this power of general supervision over the public schools. And it's your, it's your interpretation that that does not trump any Act 1240 waiver? So, if, and I, I'm not speaking explicitly to this case, I don't want to, but if there was something just really egregious going on in a district that had gotten a waiver, it's your view that until that waiver expires, or that, or the charter school that, on which it was based disappears, that there really is no room to intervene? Is that your interpretation?
I think that is the safest interpretation, yes, because Act 1240 has specific language, and it does not give us any authority, you know, over that process. But I mean, you, you always have to remember that the state always has the ultimate responsibility to ensure that all students in the state receive an adequate education, so. And that is always a paramount, paramount duty that the state retains.
Yeah, and that's really my question is, with that very clear duty that we have and, and the powers that we have over general supervision, you know, I just, and, you know, I'm, I'm not been a fan of these all along, I think we all know that, but I do, I do think that some of, as Ms. Oak suggested, I mean, in the first wave, there were some fairly broad ones, and fairly long ones that were granted, and, and this is a good example of that. And I, I just wanted to ask that one more time, if there's any, any possibility. Sounds like your, your view is no.
My view is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, yeah, your view is no. My, I was just going to say, as we've discussed before, with the session coming up, it's something that we are exploring the opportunity to revisit that law and see if we can't make the case that, you know, there, there's at least a need for rules, rulemaking authority, because the, the State Board is effectively hamstrung with respect to some of the normal powers and duties that you all have.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Freino.
Thank you.
Any other items on the consent agenda? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the entire agenda, consent agenda minus item twelve.
May I just approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Mr. Williamson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And I want to use this opportunity, I, I did not welcome Ms. Hill back, and, and since she was last here, she is now a grandmother, and we, we, we congratulate her and her family on that, so. Okay, we are now down to the action agenda, and we start with a, a couple of resolutions. Mr. Owens is here with the Arkansas School Bus Safety Week Resolution. I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Jerry. I'm Senior Transportation Manager, here again with, asking you to approve this resolution for School Bus Safety Week, October 22nd through the 26th. Again, there, there's certainly a need. Each year, we do the Flashing Red Kids Ahead Campaign, and we do a survey every year, a statewide survey. And this past April, there were eight hundred and fifty-seven illegal passing in one day, guys, and this is consistent. This is, we do this every year, and this is out of a hundred and ninety-four school districts, so we know we have a few more school districts. So, we can easily say, we have a thousand illegal passing every day. This is with a big yellow school bus sitting there, the red lights going off, the stop arms out, and kids crossing the road, and we have cars passing them. So, there is certainly a, a huge need for us to, to make the public aware of, of the safety needs and concerns. I would like to read this resolution, and then later on, we always recognize an outstanding professional in transportation, and we have one here with us as well. But if you will allow me to read this resolution, it says, "The Arkansas State Board of Education recognizes that providing Arkansas students with safe school bus transportation is a vital part of the education system, and in Arkansas, more than seven thousand buses transport approximately three hundred and fifty thousand students to and from school and school-related events each day. Arkansas school bus drivers travel more than two hundred and forty route miles each day, and whereas the Arkansas Department of Education and the Arkansas Division of Public School Academic Facilities and Transportation are committed to raising public awareness about the importance of school bus safety, and whereas school bus drivers, mechanics, transportation directors across the state are to be commended for their unwavering commitment to school bus safety, and whereas concerned citizens and leaders are be, to be commended for devoting their time, talent, and resources to promoting school bus safety. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Arkansas State Board of Education, recognize the week of October 22nd through the 26th, 2018, as Arkansas School Bus Safety Week." And with this, again, before your action, I would like to recognize Tom Farmer. His name is well-known with, he's been Transportation Director for twenty-six years, and I think he's talking about retiring and moving into politics. But, but e- even, even on the national level, when you'd mentioned transportation, folks know Tom Farmer, and he's been instrumental with the Flashing Red Kids Ahead Campaign. Every organization, the Southeast Pupil Transportation, he's highly involved with that, and just been so committed to, to improving school bus safety. We know school buses are the safest way to travel, but again, twenty-six years, I think that's, takes a special person, and we need to recognize him. Tom, please stand up and. Much of that time, he's had to drive a bus too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
They have to drive a bus. So, again, with that, I present to you the resolution.
All right. Thank you. Y'all have heard the resolution, and I would entertain a motion to, to pass it. All right, motion by Ms. McFetrich, second by Ms. Oak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I think too, there's a lot, so much emphasis right now in the public on school safety, and I think people need to realize that school safety starts on the bus and not just in the building. Do the local and state police help monitor? Do they, so that we've got a good partner with them? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I didn't see you come in, Dr. May. Welcome. Um, our second resolution, um, is Arkansas Safe Schools Week Resolution, uh, and I turn it over to Dr. Cheryl May.
Thank you, sir, uh, and members of the, uh, of the board. It's always a great pleasure to be before you and greatly appreciate your considering our resolution today. Uh, as many of you know, I'm Chair of the Criminal Justice Institute, uh, Director of the Criminal Justice Institute. A little bit difference in size, maybe. Uh, I'm Director of the Criminal Justice Institute and the Arkansas Center for School Safety. I'm also Chair of the Department of Ed's Safe Schools Committee, uh, and I'm also Chair of the Governor's Arkansas, uh, Commission, uh, for, for Safe Schools. I wanna first of all commend, uh, Commissioner Key. Uh, the whole time that I've known him and he's been Commissioner, school safety has been a number-one priority for him. Uh, I'm very grateful to the members of the Safe Schools Committee for all their diligent work. Uh, part of what we're gonna try to do to roll out Safe Schools Week is to provide a series of certificates, make them available to school resource officers rather than mandate there be a certain level of training. It was felt that having them be optional, uh, was the best way to go, and so we're going to be rolling out the availability of, of those certificates, and I'm very grateful, uh, for the committee members for coming up with, with that option. Uh, I'm, I'm here to ask, uh, for a resolution, uh, and if it's okay, I'll go ahead and, and read that resolution. Uh, whereas more than forty-nine thousand, hundred thousand students attend public schools in Arkansas, and whereas a safe and secure environment enhances student learning, and whereas approximately seventy-two thousand administrators, faculty, and staff at Arkansas's public schools are committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for all students, and whereas more than three hundred and fifteen school resource officers assist in ensuring students remain safe at public schools, and whereas the Arkansas Department of Education, the Arkansas Center for School Safety, and the Arkansas Safe Schools Association have partnered together to provide school safety resources and promote a safe and educational environment. And whereas the Safe Schools Committee is charged with developing model policies and procedures that may ensure a safe and productive learning environment of students and school employees for recommending to the State Board of Education any necessary rules and regulations for ensuring a safe school environment, and for recommending the House, to the House Committee on Education and the Sen- Senate Committee on Education, any necessary legislation for ensuring a safe school environment, and whereas local and state law enforcement agencies and organizations provide support to school districts. Uh, I, we, the members of the Arkansas State Board of Ecu- of Education, recognize the week of October twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty eighteen, as Arkansas Safe Schools Week. I would appreciate a good vote.
Great, thank you, Dr. May. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion on this, on this item. All right, motion by Mr. Williamson.
Second.
Second by, um, Ms. Dean, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, excellent. Okay, we are now down to action item three, um, and, um, I'll turn it over to Ms. Blag. Uh, this is the, uh, uh, conservative application in the Sanders case.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Simone Blag, Attorney for Educator Effectiveness and Licensor. I am here today for you to consider the re- the request, the waiver request of Courtney Sanders, an applicant for licensure who was found guilty of a disqualifying offense. I ask that if Mr. Sanders is present, that he step forward at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Sanders.
Uh, Dr. Barth, uh, Mr. Chair, I ask that witnesses be sworn in at this time.
All right. Um, if you would please raise your right hand, um, and, uh, do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. Thank you. All right, so, Ms. Blag, if you'll walk us through our...
Yes, thank you. The rules, under the rules governing background checks, the educator and the Department of Education each have five minutes for an opening statement. Board members may ask questions at any time. Each party will be given twenty minutes to present their cases, beginning with the representative of the Department of Education. The Chairperson of the State Board may, only for good cause shown and upon the request of either party, allow either party additional time to present their case. Each party will have five minutes to make a closing statement. To that end, I will proceed with an opening statement with the leave of the Chairperson.
All right, great. Mr. Sanders, you can have a seat and, and, uh, we'll get you up in just a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Courtney L. Sanders has applied for an Arkansas teaching license. A redacted copy of his application is before you, marked as ADE Exhibit One. However, Arkansas law provides that the State Board of Education shall not issue a first-time license to any person who has pled guilty to or been found guilty of the enumerated offenses listed in Arkansas Code Section six seventeen four-ten and six seventeen four-eleven. The relevant sections of six seventeen four-ten are listed in ADE Exhibit Seven. A jury found Mr. Sanders guilty of a disqualifying offense on August twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-five. Evidence is ADE Exhibit Two. Notice of that disqualification was sent to Mr. Sanders on August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. A copy of the notification is found as ADE Exhibit Three. On September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Sanders requested a hearing. This request is marked ADE Exhibit Four. During the course of the presentation of evidence, I will discuss the documents before you, and with that, I yield the floor.
Great, thank you, Ms. Blag. All right, uh, Mr. Sanders, you have, uh, initially five minutes, and then you will have longer later, um...
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here, thankful to be here, thankful to be before you. Uh, just like this first page says, coming home to give back. I graduated from Texas Arcana Senior High back in ninety-five. Left and went to school at UAM. Uh, played ball for three years down there. Left there, transferred to the U of A, um, where I earned my degree in two thousand and two. And I worked as a, uh, student assistant, uh, for the first couple of years. Then I worked as a graduate assistant. All told, I worked seven years at the U of A, uh, whether it was student assistant, grad assistant, quality control, I did a lot of jobs at the U of A for seven years. Left the U of A and went to Missouri State University as a assistant coach, intervention coordinator. Uh, worked seven years up there with, with students, got a chance to, to meet a lot of students, changed a lot of lives. Um, left there in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, went to Georgia, South Georgia. Uh, it's my first high school job. Uh, spent three years down there, working at Colquitt County High School, which leads me here today, uh, at Hot Springs High School, is where I'm at now. Uh, coming home to give back has kind of been, um, the reason I got back to Arkansas. I wanted to do some things I was doing in Georgia. I had a free lunch program where kids could come eat for free on Saturdays. Uh, and it was, it was a success. Kinda wanna do something like that in this area, because there is a need for that. I made a mistake in nineteen ninety-five. I don't hide from it. I've actually used that as a tool to educate our youth, men and, uh, female, uh, male and female, on treat people with respect and just really, really be considerate of people's feelings. Uh, I thank God for this opportunity, thank God y'all was able to listen to me. One minute.
All right, great. And you'll, um, you'll have additional time, um, in just a few minutes as well. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blag, you have up to twenty minutes.
Thank you, sir. The department has information from public records that Mr. Sanders was found guilty of the disqualifying, of a disqualifying offense, specifically sexual abuse in the first degree, on August twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-five. Again, the verdict is marked A- as ADE Exhibit Two. A redacted copy of the felony information and affidavit for warrant of arrest are marked as ADE Exhibit Five. And though the date of birth is not visible to you, it does match the information that's on department records. I'll give you a moment to review the facts constituting probable cause found on page two of the document. I've highlighted that information for you. Note that the crime was committed on school grounds. The sentencing order was filed on August twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-five, and is marked as ADE Exhibit Six. Again, the relevant sections that I will direct you to are highlighted. At the top of the sentencing order, you will see that the defendant was found guilty at jury trial. Following that, the sentencing order identifies Mr. Courtney Leroy Sanders as the defendant, and the date of birth, again, is redacted, but it does match, that is in, uh, department records. Yes, ma'am? Did you have a... Okay. Um, at the middle of the same page, you will see the offense that Mr. Sanders was convicted. To the right of that, you will see the classification, it's a felony, C-level. And finally, at the bottom of the page, you will see that the sentencing order was signed by a judge on nineteen ninety-five. That concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Start over here, Ms. McFetrich, any questions? Okay. Ms. Newton? Ms. Chambers? Ms. Zook?
Where did you say the, um, sentencing was?
Sentencing order is marked as ADE Exhibit Six.
Exhibit Six, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, is now.
Mr. Williamson? Dr. Moore? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Sanders, you have, um, up to twenty minutes.
Again, I thank you all for giving this opportunity. Um, I've, I've done some things in my life that, uh, I'm proud of, but it, it's, it's really not about me at this point in my life. I have a nine-year-old daughter and a six-year-old daughter, and, uh, I wanna be a role model and a good dad for them. That's why I give back the way I give back. I want them to be able to give back.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions? Any, any questions? Ms. Zook?
How old were you in, in August of that?
Mr. Sanders? Yeah.
Good morning. Uh, how old were you in August of nineteen ninety-five?
I was eighteen.
Okay. And, uh, did you serve time?
No, ma'am. Well, I, initially, I served eight days and eight nights in jail.
Okay. And, um, this didn't come up the first time you got a license, because it's just on the renewal?
This is the first time I've ever dealt with this in eighteen years. I've been in education for eighteen years.
And, uh, is the DHS require you to be supervised when you're with your own children, or so?
No, ma'am, no issues.
Are you on the register?
No, ma'am, no issues.
That's all I have.
Ms. Ms. Chan? Ms. Dean? Ms. Chambers?
Yeah.
Ms. Dean?
Have you had any, uh, other incidents since this time of ninety-nine five?
No trouble with the law.
Ms. McFetrich? Any additional questions?
You, you are teaching at the moment at Hot Springs High School.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay, so, um, we, we still have plenty of time, if there are additional questions of the department or if anything else arises for Mr. Sanders. Is, my question is, is there, uh, a recommendation from the department?
Our recommendation for consistency state sake is that we not issue a license. Uh, in my closing, I have prepared for you guys, basically, this was twenty-three years ago, he was eighteen at the time. Um, the offense, though, did occur on school grounds. We acknowledge that Mr. Sanders has not had any other criminal incidents that we're aware of, that he, um, has applied for a license here in Arkansas through reciprocity. Um, there is, that's the licensure side of things that I'm not privy to, but we're here for the background check part of things. Um, and so, he's been involved in a lot of things, and we acknowledge the good that he has done, but that is, that is, that's all I have on that.
Okay. All right. And, and does he have a closing sta- does he have time for closing?
He does have time for a closing statement, I feel like.
Do you have any additional closing remarks?
No, s- no, sorry.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would like to add, um, Mr. Sanders has provided additional evidence and information, specifically employment and character references, to demonstrate that he does not pose a threat to the health or safety of schoolchildren and school personnel, and that, um, the disqualifying offense is listed, and the board has authority to take action. And evidence for the board's consideration should include the age at which the time, the age at which the crime or incident was committed, the circumstances surrounding the crime or incident, the length of time since the crime or incident, subsequent work history, employment references, character references, and other evidence demonstrating that the applicant does not pose a threat to the health or safety of schoolchildren and school personnel. Just wanted to add that for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders, if you have any closing remarks?
In closing, I ask that you, you all grant me a waiver for I can be a certified teacher in the state of Arkansas. Uh, I would not disappoint you, would not let you down, and you got my word. For eighteen years, I've been involved with kids, and, and I know this, this is what the law called me to do, and I just ask that you all grant me a waiver for I can become a certified teacher.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional questions? Ms. Ms. Zook?
Yeah, just procedural probably, is there, uh, such a thing as, uh, probationary license? Or since this is the first time, since it's reciprocal, I know if you get a license the first time, is it, you know, right out of high school or college, or college, that you are provisional and then it becomes permanent? When it's reciprocal, is that something that, uh, comes to play? Or is it either licensed or not licensed?
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Do I need to swear her? Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Zook.
So currently, we don't have all the information we need in order to grant us a reciprocal license. All that we've received from Georgia was a temporary license of one-year provisional, and that usually means that there were deficiencies to complete. Um, so we can't reciprocate based on that. Um, we need the rest of the information before we could go ahead and work through the reciprocity application. So I think this is basically about the background check, and, um, there's no type of provisional that we have, um, based upon, um, a background check, only that they can come before state board.
So he can apply, just not asking you to reci- So he can apply, just not asking you to reciprocate, but just say, I'm on an Arkansas license? Or does he have to do a reciprocal since he was provisionally licensed in another state?
He doesn't have to do reciprocal, but we would have to have more information of what to base a, a license upon. We can't use the Georgia license to reciprocate.
Okay.
That we received.
So if this waiver was granted, that process would still move forward? That would, it would allow the rest of the process to move forward?
To move forward or not.
And we don't know what the?
Correct. I, I don't have the transcripts yet or things like that of that nature that I would need.
But if, if the waiver is denied, then the process stops?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Um, we'll, we'll deliberate now. Um, and, uh, I'll open it up for conversation. Our motion, uh, but if, if folks want to talk for a moment.
I, I move that we grant the waiver.
One second.
So, uh, motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Look. Um, are there converse, any comments? Ms. Chambers?
I would just, um, based on the, the direction that we're heading, would appreciate any conversation of perspective from folks that are support, supporting this, um, what you're thinking and why you feel that way.
I guess, uh, my consideration is, you know, I wear another hat as a CASA worker, is he's not on the maltreatment or abuse register. Uh, he did not, uh, they did not require him to serve time after the true finding. He admitted to what he did. Uh, he has been working with, uh, youth and, uh, around youth, uh, for eighteen years and he is not required to have supervision to be with his own children. So all of that goes into my, uh, belief that, um, he is not a risk or he is not a, a repeat offender.
In, in my judgment, I looked at the, um, the guidelines that were given and, um, it says circumstances of the state we may consider includes, but it's not limited to. In the list, I, I looked and I found, um, I thought six of the seven were already met and that, um, that those conditions were, remained, the age, the circuit, uh, the length of the time since the incident occurred, subsequent work history, employment references, character ref, references and evidence that he does not pose a threat, which were some of the things that, um, Mrs. listed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Ms. House? All right, um, want to do a roll call on this? So the motion is to, uh, grant the waiver and allow the process to continue. Ms. Look?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Please record me as a no. Okay. Congratulations, um, and the process will continue and, and, uh, we wish the best of luck in that, in that process and in the future. And safe travels. All right. Um, Ms. Blag, you are up again. Um, and this is the Jones case, item four.
Thank you. Good morning again. Simone Blag, attorney for educator effectiveness and licensure. I am here today for you to consider the revocation of the teaching license of Shane Samuel Jones due to his plea of guilty to a disqualifying offense. If Mr. Jones is present, I ask that he step forward at this time. Mr. Jones is not here to contest, so if you would like, I will quickly address the underlying basis for the recommendation of revocation. Arkansas law provides that the state board of education shall revoke the license of any person who has pled guilty to or been found guilty of the enumerated offenses listed in Arkansas Code, section six seventeen four-ten and six seventeen four-eleven. The relevant sections of six seventeen four-ten is marked as ADE Exhibit Seven. Mr. Jones is a licensed educator with a standard teaching license that expires on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. A copy of his last issued license is marked as ADE Exhibit One. Mr. Jones pled guilty to an enumerated disqualifying offense on July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. A file marked plea and waiver statement is marked as ADE Exhibit Two. The plea and waiver document names Mr. Jones as the defendant and has his signature. The charging information and probable cause affidavit are marked as ADE Exhibit Three. I'll give you a moment to review the probable cause affidavit. Again, I've taken the liberty to highlight the relevant portions for you. If you'd please turn to page two of five and read the first sentence of the last paragraph. I'd like to just draw your attention to that. And then turn to page four of five and read the last sentence of the third paragraph. Note that the crime was committed on school grounds and went less than one year ago. Mr. Jones was convicted and sentenced by the court of the crime of video voyeurism, a class D felony, on July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. The amended sentencing order was filed on August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen and is marked as ADE Exhibit Four. Mr. Jones was sentenced to forty-eight months in the Arkansas Department of Corrections with twenty-four months of suspended imposition of sentence. The top of page three of that document indicates that he must register as a sex offender. Mr. Jones was notified of the disqualification on July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen by both first-class and certified mail to the last address on file with the department. The certified mail was delivered on August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen and the first-class mail was not returned. The notice is labeled as ADE Exhibit Five. Mr. Jones did not respond to the request, to the notice of disqualification, nor did he request a waiver of the disqualification. The department sent Mr. Jones a notice of today's hearing on September fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, also by first-class and certified mail to the last address on file with the department. As evidenced by ADE Exhibit Six, the certified mail was delivered on September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and the first-class mail was not returned. Mr. Jones is not here today. The department recommends the board revoke Mr. Jones's license.
Any questions for Ms. Blag? Invite a motion?
A move to revoke.
Second.
The, the proper motion would be to deny the.
To mo, the motion to revoke.
Okay, motion is, motion is to revoke, okay. All right. You were, you were right, Ms. Look.
Thank you.
And, uh, motion by Ms. Look. Motion by, uh, Ms. Look, second by Mr. Williamson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blag?
And, Ms. Blag, would you take up any of the packets that members may want to back to you, please?
Okay, I, I think we, this next item may be fairly, uh, fairly, uh, in, in detailed and so I think we're going to take a, let's just take a, a ten-minute break. We'll, we'll come back at five after eleven. All right. See you at five after.
All right. So, this is, remember that we, item five was pulled. And so, we are now down to item six, which is the Bennett case. And this is different than things that, this, we don't normally do this. So, it's kind of a new, new process. And Ms. Black's gonna get started, and then I'll, I'll, Ms., sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Daryl. We will move from, I will, after, after Ms. Taylor presents things, I will then take it from there.
All right. I'm Daryl Taylor, managing attorney for PLSB. And we are here for the State Board review of the findings and recommendations of the PLSB evidentiary hearing Subcommittee in the matter involving educator Rebecca Bennett, case number seventeen dash one fifty-seven. Attorney Matthew Campbell is here as counsel for the educator.
Thank you.
Would the board care for a review of the rules for this proceeding?
I, I think that probably would be helpful. Or I can, I can do it either way. Your, your call.
So, the preliminary rules, section sixteen four of the Rules Governing Code of Ethics for Arkansas educators provide that the PLSB attorney shall introduce the item on the The educator will then have ten minutes to present an oral argument in opposition to the findings and recommendations. And then, the PLSB attorney will have ten minutes for all oral argument in support of the findings. Upon good cause shown, the Chair of the State Board may grant either party additional time for oral argument. And so, that just essentially lays out how the procedure shall flow. If there are additional questions as it relates to witnesses and so forth, we can address that as well.
Great. And I want to do a couple of things before we get started with the case. I want to go around and be sure that everyone has, was able to get access to all of the evidence.
I haven't looked at all of the things that she sent us this morning, but all the things that we got before today, I have looked at.
Okay.
And if I may clarify, in relationship to some questions I received this morning, I sent a matrix which would outline the proposed fines or the potential fines in this case, in addition to if there is training that is recommended in this case, provided a training guide, so that you'll have the options by which you can choose from. So, as it relates to the case, there's nothing new substantive as it relates to the content of the case. It just gives you further guidance as it relates to how you would craft a potential sanction.
Were y'all able to review the substantive content? Okay. Okay. And so, just to, I also want to get in, in folks' heads, the three things that ultimately we will have to decide. We will, as a board, have to determine the finding of fact. We'll second, have to articulate the conclusion of law. And then, third, we will have to choose a final determination. That is what, if there is a sanction, what that sanction would be. And so, that's three things. We're gonna have to do it in, in open. It's a little bit like making sausage in public, because we obviously are deliberating in public. So, but as you are thinking through this case, recognize that we're gonna have to do each of those three things. Mm-hmm. So, the first is, is a finding of fact. That is what, what happened. Second, the conclusion of law. And with conclusion of law, is or is not that a violation of the Code of Ethics? And then, finally, the final determination, which would be the actual sanction. And we have broad, assume, if there is a determination that there was a violation of law, of the ethics standard, then we have a tremendous amount of room to maneuver in terms of what that sanction is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Okay. So, we start with ten minutes. And I guess we turn things over to the attorney for Ms. Bennett. And you have up to ten minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. As Ms. Taylor said, my name is Matthew Campbell. I'm, sorry, I'm here on behalf of the educator, Ms. Rebecca Bennett. I assume, well, there are two separate categories that I think are objections to the, the findings, the earlier findings in discipline can be boiled down to. One is if the finding of fact that, that Ms. Bennett shoved or slammed a student against the wall. And then, the other is an objection to the severity of the discipline that was imposed. I'm trying to keep those sort of separate, but moving forward at the same time. I know Ms. Taylor provided the video, the surveillance video, and I believe everyone had a chance to watch it. I've seen it as well. I don't know how much context has been provided, other than the video and the transcript of the previous hearing. But what you had in the moments leading up to what you could see on the video was a, an unruly student who had been asked to leave the classroom, refused to leave the classroom, and then, at some point escalated to the point where he, he was leaving the classroom, but not to do what he had been told to do. He was just, just gonna go. Ms. Bennett goes into the hallway, and then, that's where the video picks up that you've seen. As part of our brief, I submitted the findings from DHS regarding the child maltreatment registry. At the time of the prior hearing, the, that got us here for this appeal, this was still pending. DHS hadn't made a decision. There was a question near the end of that earlier hearing, asking what DHS had determined. Ms. Bennett's attorney noted, it's been appealed. And one of the hearing officers at the previous hearing said, "Well, you know, until it's been determined by DHS, then that still stands." Because that, on appeal, DHS had originally determined that there was a violation, but on appeal, once the DHS hearing officer had a chance to look at the video, consider the circumstances, what she found was that there was no, there was no choking, there was no slamming, there was no violation like that. This was an educator using the, the specific amount of force that was necessary to protect both the child and herself. And that the contact was instigated, the escalation in contact was instigated when the child tried to shove away from Ms. Bennett as she was trying to get him to the office where she had told him to go. The, I pointed the DHS findings for two reasons. One, at this point, we have, you know, one determination that yes, there was some sort of slam, shove against the wall, and another state agency saying, "No, there wasn't. This was just the appropriate, minimal use of force necessary." But the DHS hearing also pointed out that the student, in the testimony related for DHS, none of his testimony actually matched what was on the video. She said, you know, that nothing in the video supported what the student had said, and that he had exaggerated, you know, the allegations and made it sound like more than it actually was. And I think, I think that's sort of part and parcel of what we're dealing with here, is this started from allegations from the student and his parent. And at this point, we've had one state agency saying, you know, the student's not telling the truth here. This is exaggerated, and it's blown up into something more than what it really is. I would submit to you that, having seen the video and in the context of, of what you saw, this was not Ms. Bennett slamming or shoving a child against the wall. This was an appropriate use of force. And I think that's borne out by the fact that, you know, the child, contrary to the child's testimony at the previous hearing, he testified that at, he broke free from Ms. Bennett, and he ran out the door and like left the school. Not at all what happened. He, he went to the office, and then, he returned to her classroom the next day without incident, and did not have another incident with her, you know, following that. So, the student was either conflating two different events, or was otherwise exaggerating to try to make this seem like it had more of an impact on him. Which leads me to, sort of dovetails into the severity of the discipline. The matrix that was, the disciplinary matrix that was relevant at, at the time of the previous hearing, listed for sanction guidelines under suspension, the suspension, waiting factors for suspension included multiple violations, violations that occur over a period of years, moderate to high level of negative impact on the student, level of damage to school property, or willful or intentional violation of the Code of Ethics. It's, you know, it's not disputed at all that this was only a, a single incident, so the first two factors aren't at play. The only one, and I think that you'll hear argument about, is that somehow the student, the student testified that he had, you know, extensive emotional trauma over this. Yet, he was able to return to the classroom the next day. That was an issue. His dad even testified at the previous hearing that while they had looked at counseling, they had, I believe the quote was, "Missed several appointments." This wasn't something that they were pursuing. And this is the child who, for all intents and purposes, had already had some emotional issues. Ms. Bennett had asked for counseling for him, had tried to get the father to give him counseling, months before this incident even happened, because of behavioral issues in the classroom. The father flatly refused. This incident happens, and then, all of a sudden, he goes to a little bit of counseling and starts missing appointments. So, I don't think there's anything in the record beyond the testimony of the student to suggest any sort of, any sort of emotional trauma, but certainly not any extensive emotional trauma that would rise to the level, you know, moderate to high level of im, negative impact on the student. There's been no, no showing that the student had trouble based on the, had trouble because of this incident, had trouble, you know, completing the school year, or has been unable to attend school, or has had any sort of, you know, like real necessary counseling. He's just, they looked at counseling, and they stopped going. So, I, I don't see anything in the record to support the negative impact. And if you don't have that, then we're down to, you know, none of the factors for suspension being in play. The problem, and it's raised in our brief, is that at the previous hearing, the, the board looked at it and said, "Yeah, this was a single incident, and then without explanation, but we still think a suspension is warranted." So, we have no finding of facts from them to even suggest why they found it was warranted. This was sort of a, yeah, it was one, a one-off, which is the only factor they, and then, they just sort of glossed over. And I don't think, just as a procedural matter, and as a, as a due process issue, I don't think you can go so far as an eighteen-month suspension, which, I mean, practically a fifteen month suspension at this point. I don't think you can do that without some sort of finding of, an explanation as to if you found one of these factors for suspension, how you found it, and what facts support it. And if there are no facts to support it, then you haven't found that factor. It's as simple as that. And you certainly can't even fail to reference which factor you thought warranted. So, if we don't, if there's none of the factors for suspension, we're back down to the far-left side of, excuse me, of the matrix. You know, letter of caution has the most relevant factors, you know, only one incident, actions don't worry warrant, disciplinary sanction, no detrimental impact on the student, no prior history of similar behavior. Which also I meant to get into is that Ms. Bennett's been teaching for sixteen years. She's been at this middle school for over two years. This is the first allegation of this, of any kind, but this, of any sort of physical contact with a student. This is by far the first and only, and it hasn't been an issue. She's back in the exact same position this year, teaching. Her, the, the setup is so that she's in a building that is adjacent to the gym at the middle school. She's not in the main building, and there's, the superintendent's not coming by to check on her, the principal's not coming by to check on her. Nobody at the school has evidenced any sort of concern or worried that she's going to, like this is an ongoing event, or that she's somehow unstable. They've let her go back to work, and it's been exactly as it was for every other day of the sixteen years, aside from this one day where she used just the amount of force that was necessary. If the board has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. I also know that the rules allow for the board to ask Ms. Bennett any questions, if you have questions directly for her, and she's, you know, prepared and available for that as well. So, I'll turn it over to you for the remainder of my time, or for any questions you may have.
I think you have five seconds, so I think that's...
Nailed it.
You've done a very good job of, of, of your time, time usage. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Taylor. You have ten minutes.
The Arkansas Department of Education received a complaint February the ninth, two thousand and seventeen, which alleged the following. We have video footage of a teacher removing a student from a classroom and slamming him against a wall. That complaint is provided for you at PLSB Exhibit Number Five, Page One. In the student's testimony at the evidentiary hearing, he says that when he was instructed to go into the hallway repeatedly, he said no. You'll find that testimony, page fifteen, line twenty-one of the transcript. He was honest about his verbal refusal to cooperate. He goes on to say, "His teacher told him to leave at least twice. After that, he refused yet again. But then, she yanked him from his chair, put him in a chokehold, jerked him, drug him across the floor until he got to the door, and then pulled him up to where he was standing. When they got into the hallway, she slammed him against the wall." And what you see in the video, from the point at which they leave the room, is consistent with his testimony. You see the educator's arm around his neck, what he classifies as a chokehold. You see the slamming, however you choose to classify it, against the wall. So, for all intents and purposes, his testimony is consistent with the physical evidence that you have before you. When the educator was asked, "Why did she do this?", her response was, "She was frustrated." Now, counsel has outlined several points in his brief. He's discussed several issues as he stood here today. And I'd like to address a couple of these. However, before I do, I want to point out that the procedural history of this matter is outlined in PLSB's response to the educator's brief, and that has been provided for you. I'd also like to point out specifically, the educator Bennett holds a standard Arkansas teaching license that expires December the thirty-first, two thousand and eight. That is provided for you at PLSB Exhibit Eleven. And that is what brings her within the jurisdiction of this board. So, specifically as it relates to the arguments articulated by counsel. First, he relies heavily on a final order from the Department of Human Services, which I refer to as DHS. As articulated in that order, the purpose of the appeal hearing was to ascertain, rather, Rebecca Bennett, and I quote, "Engaged in conduct that created a realistic and serious threat of death, permanent or temporary disfigurement, or impairment of any bodily organ." However, in stark contrast, the question before this body is whether conduct occurred which violated the Code of Ethics. It is alleged specifically that educator Bennett violated standard one, and that standard provides that an educator should maintain... provides that an educator should maintain a professional relationship with each student, both inside and outside of the classroom. And the rules for the code of ethics give some level of explanation as to what a professional relationship looks like. It says that it encompasses such behavior and action that promotes at all times, mental, emotional, physical health and safety of a student. Now although the DHS proceeding does flow from the same set of circumstances as this PLSB matter, the standard which was applied in the DHS proceeding is vastly different from the standard that you will utilize to evaluate a code violation. PLSB does not seek to establish that there was a realistic and serious threat of death, permanent or temporary disfigurement, or any impairment of a bodily organ. However, it is alleged that while escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett shoved, slammed, or threw the student against the wall. And that is a violation of the code of ethics. Therefore, counsel's reliance on the DHS proceeding is improper and misapplied in this case. He goes on to discuss, in the brief and today, he talked about some summations and observations that flowed from the DHS order. However, you have been provided with direct evidence. You have been provided with the video, so there is no necessity for you to, um, look at a summation of what the video provides. You have the video. You have been provided with the transcript. So you have direct testimony from individuals who were physically in the room, physically at the school that day. And that is the best record of what occurred. Now to clarify, there are two different videos. The first video is going to show, um, as the educator exits the classroom with the student. The second video is a continuation further down the hall. And so you are going to see different angles, but that primary video, the initial physical contact, is the one that I would argue is the most relevant. And it is upon this direct evidence that you should base your decision, not a summation or observation from a different proceeding utilizing a standard that is not applicable here. And thirdly, counsel for the educator argues that the sanction is inconsistent with the disciplinary matrix that was attached to the rules governing the code of ethics that was applicable at that time. That, uh, matrix has been provided for you at PLSB Exhibit Number 12. However, the sanction, I would argue that sanctions at each level of this proceeding, the first being a revocation, the next being a suspension, are both consistent with the matrix. Because if you will look at that matrix, you will see that the black and white language provides that one or more factors may be present. So accordingly, a single factor may form the basis for a sanction. In this case, you have multiple factors. The first, negative impact on the student. The student and his father testified that he was affected emotionally. You can find that testimony at page 17, line 16 of the transcript. His father's testimony is at page 49. Both indicated there was emotional distress. And the father's testimony was that the counseling was directly related to the emotional distress. There was no conversation about any previous issues, any previous concerns that had been voiced by any educator. He went into counseling as a direct response to his distrust of his teachers. The way the, the father articulated, he has a, this concept, he was going through a conspiracy theory. He felt that all teachers were now out to get him. He was concerned that this could happen to him again. That is the direct evidence from the father. The student also testified after the incident that he experienced pain to his elbow and to his head. That is found at page 17. His father's testimony is consistent to pain to the elbow. I would argue that amounts to moderate to high level of ne, negative impact to the student. Further during educator Bennett's testimony at the evidentiary hearing, she discussed physical interaction. Her testimony is evidence of willful and intentional action. She acknowledged she could have called for help prior to making physical contact, but she chose not to do that. She acknowledged specifically that she understood the, the use of force. I asked at line 13 of page 237, "Is it fair to say you were aware of the level of force that you exerted at this point, based on your testimony?" Her response was yes. I continued, "So when we see him make contact with the wall, you're aware of the level of force you're utilizing at that point?" Again, her response was yes. There you have several factors that are consistent with the sanction. Before I conclude, and I'm sure I'm getting close to my time, I'd like to point out a couple of other issues. The educator had the opportunity to write out a written account. You'll see that at PLSB Exhibit Three. And I want you to make note of what you don't see there. In her written account, when she had an opportunity, she does not talk about physical aggression. She does not talk about him being unruly. She does not indicate that he was, um, throwing things, um, that he was running about the classroom, all things that you may hear at a later time. But when she was given the opportunity immediately after, you will not see those things present. And so based on the evidence that has been provided and the reasons discussed, you have sufficient evidence to find by preponderance of the evidence that the educator violated the code of ethics and by doing so, um, brings her within the purview of a sanction that you will be able to craft in line with that conclusion.
Thank you. So, the hearing, um, our hearing, um, and our determination is based on, is to be based on the transcript, the pleadings, and the oral argument that we heard today. We can, however, uh, uh, provide, ask for testimony to be provided by either the investigator or the educator. Correct?
That is correct. I will note that the investigator, I believe in this case, is no longer with us. So, um, that person is not available for testimony. However, I would reiterate, this is not intended as a rehearing.
Exactly.
That, that testimony will be for, um, limited purposes, and it is limited to those individuals.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to, before we started asking questions, wanted to let you know that we do need to, um, make that decision about whether we will accept additional limited testimony or whether the board feels that there is plenty of information based on the materials that we have seen. All righty. My, so is everybody feeling they have enough information on, on what we, what we have gotten? All right, okay. Then, um, it is time for our discussion. And I think, uh, just to kind of keep things in a, uh, as tidy a fashion as, as possible, we would start with, um, the finding of fact. And, um, both parties have supplied their, uh, their, their draft, their proposed language about a finding of fact. There's agreement that the first, uh, finding of fact, um, uh, is that Ms. Bennett is a licensed educator in the state of Arkansas, and that is the, the first, uh, finding of fact. And so, uh, I will just kind of present that. There is, of course, uh, dissent on the remaining finder of fa, finding of fact, um, and that is really the question of whether, um, uh, Ms. Bennett shoved, slammed, or threw the student against the wall. And so that is a, that is a crucial determination of whether, uh, what, what, uh, what our determination is there and what our evidence for that determination, uh, is. And so I will open it up for a conversation about, um, the finding of fact, um, and where, where folks come down in terms of, of that key determination.
I'll just, I'll, I'll start with a question if I might. The finding of fact, um, I'm, I'm assuming this comes under that heading. So is part of our deliberation to give consideration to provocation? Because one of the things that's interesting in the days that we live in, regardless of what we read about an event, a video somehow takes it to an entirely different level, which I think is good in terms of being able to, in very much in a first person, have a, have a, have a judgment or a perspective. But an awful lot of what we've been talking about, a lot of the texts that we received had to do with what led up to what we saw. So is there, how much time and consideration are we to give to that in determining fact?
So that is part of the, uh, your deliberation. That is why you provided with the transcript that tried to, attempted to give you a full picture of the circumstances, what we're leading, which led up to what you ultimately see in the video.
Do we have the ability to ask the teacher to speak?
You do have the ability. However, I would note that this is not intended as a rehearing, um, that some of that specific, um, information was covered during the course of it. So with that limitation, you definitely can ask questions of the educator. But I, I guess I would also say that depending on the question, there is, I do not have the ability to provide rebuttal to that. I don't have any additional witnesses. Those responses would need to be provided from the transcript. Does that make sense?
It does.
And so, we can't, we can't do too much of a back and forth and essentially have a whole nother hearing.
So Ms. Chambers, would you like to ask a question of the educator?
Well, I, I don't have a specific question. I would, uh, if, if the opportunity allows, just hear perspective on, uh, the minute or two that preceded what we saw in the video, to hear it from the teacher directly. But I, but I certainly appreciate, this is not even handed in terms of a, a different perspective to offer to whatever we would hear from her, so.
So, um, is that a motion to-
It is, but I'd ask that my peers weigh in on if that's something they have interest in.
Okay, all right. So motion, um, by Ms. Chambers to hear a limited, uh, ask a limited question or questions to the educator. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. So, um, Ms. Bennett, if you could come forward, um, and, uh, could raise your right hand.
Since it's not a hearing, does she have to be sworn?
Uh, yes, she does have to be sworn. According to the rule, she does have to be sworn. Um, "Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?"
Yes.
All right. Ms. Chambers, I'll turn it over to you for a question.
So, it, it would appear from the, from what we've already heard, that you're in agreement that, um, the circumstances in the classroom had gotten to a point that you felt warranted in taking certain actions that didn't include calling the officer, asking for help. You took matters into your own hands. So, if you could help us understand, uh, like I said, the minute or two that preceded what we saw, that would be very helpful.
Yes, sure. Um, on that day, just a, a few minutes before the video takes place, the assistant principal had been in my classroom doing an observation. Uh, the child had actually gotten angry at the assistant principal and threw his things off his desk, and the assistant principal walked over and told him to pick them up and then left the room. So the child was continuing to be in an agitated state and, and wanted to keep getting up and sharpen his pencil, and I told him, "No, Mr. Ash told you, you had to use the other pencil on your desk." He continued to argue so much that I could not continue with the lesson, so I asked him to leave the room several times and he refused. Um, so I reached down and I turned his chair away from his desk and said, "You, you need to go, you need to leave the room." And he jumped up from his chair and he ran towards the back of the classroom. And when he ran past me, I took hold of his arm to stop him. And when I did that, he resisted and pulled away from me. So I pulled him into my chest and held my arm around him to guide him out of the classroom. And that's when he began thrashing around, knocking into tables and chairs and the other 23 students that were in the classroom. So when, it was a struggle to get him to the door, and I felt like if I let go of him with the hand that I had to hit the intercom button, that I was going to lose my ability to control where his body was going. And he, um, had, had made previous statements that he was going to leave the school when he got agitated. Where my classroom is located is right next to our indoors. So when I got closer to the door, I realized I'm going to have to pivot him around and get him away from those doors until I can calm him down and, and get some help. So that's what I did. When I got to the indoors, I pivoted him around and held him against the wall, and I told him, "You've got to calm down. We, we're going to go to the office, this is enough." And then as I headed down the hallway with him, I realized that there's no way I can get him there on my own. So I stopped at the next door, um, where my coworker was, and I said, "Call the office, I need help." And at that time, I think, um, he realized, "Okay, I've got two people now, I'm going to have to comply." And then he sat down against the wall and waited for the assistant principal to come down.
Thank you.
Any additional limited questions on this side? Any questions on this side? Ms. House?
Have you ever received training in the proper, um, techniques of putting children in a hold? Are you certified? And if there's a-
No, no ma'am, I'm not. I mean, I have, in a couple of past instances, had to help, um, other teachers or administrators out, but I've never been given specific instructions on what to do when I had a child that was, um, acting in that way.
Are you aware of anybody in your building who you could go, have called to put the, to actually place their hands on-
Uh, no, we have, I mean, we have resource officers for, in, in the district, but not anyone specifically for our building at all times.
Any additional questions over here? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Appreciate, appreciate your, your being here. All right. Uh, so we are back to the key finding of fact of whether, um, Ms. Bennett, uh, did, shove, slam, uh, throw the student against the wall, or whether she did not, um, engage in that. And obviously, this is, this can be written in a way that y'all feel comfortable with.
I have a, probably a perspective that, uh, is unique in that, um, I worked with pre-teens and teenagers that had, um, behavior problems, to the point they had had to been removed from, uh, public school. What I observed and what I read in the transcript, I think, fell in line with what was necessary at the time for the benefit of the whole.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Diane's assessment. I mean, it sounds like to me that there has been a behavior problem with this child for, it wasn't just a number of days, a number of years. And to me, it sounded like the district administration didn't, wouldn't, couldn't address the issue. I feel like, um, Ms. Bennett was, uh, set up to fail after the super assistant, super principal had been in the room observing, knew that there was a problem with the child, I mean, admitted that in testimony, that I think he said the child was, had his head down, pouting, you know, upset about the whole thing, and then left. And with, with the history that this child has portrayed apparently, why would you do that? I mean, why, why would you set her up to fail? I mean, what else is she supposed to do, uh, at that point? I'm just thinking out loud, but I just, um, that, that's what's really been sticking in my craw the whole time.
Dr. Moore, Ms. House? Comments over here?
I guess my comment comes from a, a teacher perspective. I have, uh, had lots of observations in the past, and I, I can't imagine an administrator leaving me in that position. I, I mean, that, you know, that, that also, also bothered me. And, um, I also look at it from the viewpoint that this was not the only student in the classroom. There were others in the classroom that she was responsible for, and, um, not just to keep safe, but for their education. And so, I, I look at it that way also, so that, that's kind of my, where I'm at.
Any additional comments? Ms. Patricia?
I was also surprised that there was no discipline plan for him in the school from the administration. So again, I felt like the teacher was left unsupported in this situation, and it went on for considerable long time, not just this one incident. I was also, um, wondering how often the videotape was viewed. It sounded like until the parent questioned about this incident being videotaped. And how often is this videotape viewed throughout the school day or year? Or how often do they really view these tapes to see what is happening in this building? Other than this instance. Or how often do they really view these tapes to see what is happening in this building, other than this instance?
And I think also the period of time it took the principal, who already had been there and knew there was an issue, who had a student that was constantly having to be intervened. I think another point that I think we can all learn from is when we have students who are functioning below the level of the other students in the classroom, and she teaches English Language Arts, that you are gonna get frustrated. And that child has a lot of things going on at home. So I think, you know, there's an order against the father, the mother is no longer in the home, the siblings, the child is to be, there should be great deal of concern about this child. And I, what I've read and what I heard testified to is that it was just piecemeal and passed along, passed along, no real plan. The one place where he seemed to function best was stopped because they thought he saw it as a reward, as opposed to this is where he's functioning best. So I think there is a lot of concern about the child, about the child's home environment, about the fact that nobody was taking care of this, knowing, if they had dealt with teenagers and pre-teens very long, that this would more than likely happen as opposed to less than likely happen. So I think there's a lot of factors going on here, and I guess my question is, who referred this to PLSB? Because she was suspended without pay for three months, and then she was rehired and taught an entire year, and now it's before us. So who sent it to PLSB, and do we know who released the video to the public?
So in terms of who filed the complaint, I believe that it's provided as an exhibit. I believe it was Lisa Gaddis. I think it was the superintendent or the assistant superintendent at the time, and as it relates to releasing the video, I do not know.
But the board under whom she works and who, under whom the superintendent worked chose to keep her as an employee, and that student would have been or is in the same building where she is teaching now, correct?
I do not have information as it relates to the HR matter with the school, and I cannot be responsive to that second part of the question either.
Underlying research, full parts. As to who released the video, it was released by Dr. Skelton, the superintendent. Within a day or so, it became the subject of a separate lawsuit for his failure to notify Ms. Bennett before it was released to media and released to the student's father. Additionally, yes, she was rehired and is in the same position in the same building at the same school as she was at the time that this happened. And the rehire occurred following the three-month suspension, as you noted.
Okay, so this was in the winter of the sixteen-seventeen school year. She went without pay for the rest of seventeen. She taught in the seventeen-eighteen school year and has now been rehired for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
That is correct.
Thank you.
By the same judge?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so I will entertain a motion. We're gonna break, we're gonna have, this is three separate motions. The first being the finding of fact. If there is consensus, that the part A of this is that Ms. Bennett is a licensed educator in the state of Arkansas. The second, I am looking to someone to create that language. Yeah?
There is, the allegation was specifically outlined in the language that is provided, so it does need to conform with that language.
Okay. So option A is therefore while escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett did shove, slam, throw the student against the wall. If that is the finding, we need evidence to support that. The other option proposed is while escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett did not shove, slam, throw the student against the wall.
I'm sorry, so there's a question hanging there. So you're asking for us to make a motion, one versus the other?
Yeah. And I think it is important that that then ties to later issues in terms of the conclusion of law and the final determination.
Can I, can I ask a question or make a statement before coming to that? So it certainly would seem that this teacher faced a very difficult set of circumstances. It would also appear in the video that she responded in a way that was understandable, but in my opinion, not appropriate. And those kind of play to the, something happened, was the response correct, and what do we do about that? Is that true? To put it in layman's language.
I mean, it's certainly appropriate to have a finding of fact that there was, was physical, inappropriate physical action, but that does not predetermine later sanctions.
Okay, I will make the motion that the instructor did, I'm sorry.
Yes, can we hold on just for a second?
I'm sorry.
I feel I need to assist based on your conversation. So essentially, you can make the finding, but your concerns about whether it was warranted, that's how you would, that would be reflected in your sanction. So you would utilize that to try to address that concern.
May I ask a question, maybe for clarity? In the, in the determination, in the finding of fact, if the state board agrees, I'm thinking, I'm reading from what Dr. Barth is reading from, shove, slam, throw.
It has to be that specific language, because that is the, the way that it was alleged.
Okay, so that was what came from PLSB? So if, if the board views it differently than those words, shove, slam, or throw?
It's limited to that language. That's the way it was alleged.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm asking. I mean, it's.
It's a yes or no.
Yes.
It's a yes or no.
Okay.
Yes. Did or did not? Yeah.
So is that?
Ms. Chambers? I'm just, I'm all, I'm all ears.
I'm gonna go back to being a teacher, you know, I agree that she was put in a, in a horrible position, but also you, you have to be careful, and you don't want to put your hands on the student. I mean, that's, you know, unless there's another educator there. And so I don't like the wording that was used there. I think that something else could have been done, but if we, I don't want to, I don't want to give the impression that it's okay. Does that make sense? And so it's not okay to, 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 you know, we've, we've got to be careful. We want to make sure that every student is treated with respect. Every, you know, I go back to what the, what the Ethics Code One says, you know, treat every student with professional manner, which means the respect, which means emotional, physical, all of those things that, that happen. And so, you know, I really don't like the wording that's there, but I do want to, to give the, I don't want to give the impression that this is not serious. Does that make sense? So, but I don't know what we can do about it.
Alright, Ms. Chambers?
I'm very, I think I'm very similar in perspective to what Ms. Newton just articulated. I do think we have a duty to acknowledge something happened that should not have happened. It was incorrect, it was wrong. I don't like the wording. I understand that it's binary, so you either agree with it or you don't. So this is a question, I guess, a process. If we were to agree with the language that shoved occurred, and then we determine from an ethical perspective what violation corresponds to that, and then, because I do believe we can have latitude in the sanction that is something other than what was recommended, which is where my thinking is flowing. If there's another combination that others feel more comfortable with, where you don't start with, you say, no, shoving didn't occur, I'm not sure what cure we then have an option to recommend if we don't first start with something happened that was shoving. Am I making sense?
Totally, yes. So I, I do think that if you, if you do want to take some action, even much more limited than was, was initially determined, then I think it probably does make sense to say that something did happen, that there, that, that, that Ms. Bennett did, even if you don't like those verbs.
Could you give me those, those words again?
While escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett did or did not shove, slam, throw the student against the wall?
Shove.
Shove, slam, shove slash slam slash throw the student against the wall. Ms. Newton, do you want to make?
Can I make that in the motion?
Yeah, and if you could also state that, I do think it's important to say that it was a license, that she is a licensed educator.
As a licensed educator, and then the word shoved, okay, I agree, I make that emotion. Use your words if you want to.
Can we, we pick one of those words, or do we need the combination of words?
Either.
Okay. So you, I'm hearing now, while escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett did shove the student against the wall. That's your motion, two-part, both parts there. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. So that's the finding of, that's the proposed finding of fact. Is there further discussion on, on this? We have a motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Chambers.
For the, for benefit of note, minutes, could we make sure we are clear on the motion?
I will read it and see if it's accurate. The finding of fact, A, Rebecca Leann Bennett is a licensed educator in the state of Arkansas. B, while escorting a student down the hallway, educator Bennett did shove the student against the wall. Is that Ms. Newton, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Zook?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
No.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So we now move to the conclusion of law. And the conclusion of law is the question of whether this was a violation of standard one of the Code of Ethics for Arkansas educators, or whether it was not a violation of the, of standard one.
Can you read standard one? Or refer, is it in that stuff where it was sent this morning?
Yes, it is. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I've got about eight screens open here, so I'm trying to figure out. Okay. So.
Maybe easier, I have it pulled up if you'd like me to read it.
Okay. This is of the guy, an educator maintains a professional relationship with each student, both in and outside the classroom. Is that the key language? And then guide, do, would you like the guidance as well?
If you'll just refer me to the email, I'll read it.
It was in this, in what came this morning, and there is the guidance, and I'll, 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 I'll start it. The standard goes to the core of a professional educator's expected conduct in relationship with all students and transcends criminal behavior or other actions which violate law. The professional relationship with students is such behavior and action which promotes at all times the mental, emotional, and physical health and safety of students. An educator should show respect for and not demean, embarrass, or harass students. An educator should not participate in and should discourage bullying based on such characteristics as race, national origin, color, gender, sexual orientation or identity, age, disability, or religion. And then there is a definition of bullying. Is that enough to? Okay, so you got the sense of that. Okay. So the question is whether this action, which we have now found occurred, violates, violated standard one or does not.
Well, I think the fact that she removed the child from the classroom so as to diminish to a great extent the embarrassment or impact on other children, the fact that she went to her neighbor to call the office and have him check on her students. In my opinion, that shows that she was trying to not only take care of the immediate child, but that she was looking at all, looking out for all of her students for whom she was in charge at that time. So I don't believe she violated standard one.
Is that a motion, Ms. Zook?
Sure.
Second.
Alright, motion by Ms. Zook that there was not a violation of standard one that requires that an educator maintains a professional relationship with each student, both in and outside the classroom. Motion by Ms. Zook, second by Mr. Williamson. Roll call?
Discussion.
Discussion. Any student?
Read the, read the supporting, what, Harry, again, from the place. Guidance.
Guidance. Sorry. This standard goes to the core of a professional educator's expected conduct in relationship with all students and transcends criminal behavior or other actions which violate law. The professional relationship with students is such behavior and action which promotes at all times the mental, emotional, and physical health and safety of students. An educator should show respect for and not demean, embarrass, or harass students. An educator should not participate in and should discourage bullying based on such characteristics as race, et cetera. And then there is a definition of bullying that's drawn from the, from the code. And then there is also a section about social networking, technology tools, and the relationships there.
I'm peeing in on the word all students. I mean, yes, she was responsible for the students in the classroom, but she's also responsible for that one also. And all students, all times. And so, you know, I, I just think that there would have been a better way to handle it for that particular student. And so, we've talked about his needs, and you have to have that relationship with him, and you have to know what's going on, and figure out a way, no matter what's, you know, the circumstance that she, she was put in was horrible. And, and I, I hope that no other teacher's ever done, treated that way, but you still have to keep in mind that you're responsible for all students, and so I view it as a violation of the standard one.
Is there additional?
Are you ready to vote? Okay, so the motion is that it is not, no, yeah, Ms. McFetridge.
I wanted you to repeat the motion, thank you, and you're doing that.
The motion is that it is not a violation of, of standard one. Okay. Alright.
Ms. Zook? Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Ms. McFetridge?
No.
Dr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Newton?
No.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Four votes. Four, five?
Five.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, mark your own wrong. Okay, sorry, five to two.
So that, that fails, so we do need a motion now, and I will turn to Ms. Newton.
I move that it is a violation of standard one.
Alright. Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Dean. Is there further conversation? Then I think we can go straight to a roll call on this.
Okay, I'm sorry. Who made the motions?
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Dean.
Ms. Zook?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
No.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Okay, five votes in the affirmative.
Okay, so we now move to the final section, which is. the sanction. And, uh, there, there's a wide range here, um, from, um, from, in essence, close, we, the file could be closed without any sanction, right? Or does there have to be some sanction now that there has been?
Yes, the only time you can close a file is if there is no finding of a violation.
So, um, the minimum sanction would of course be a letter of caution. Um, the range, uh, now that there has been a conclusion of law, that there was a violation, could go all the way to, uh, permanent revocation. With any, uh, of the, uh, of the findings above, uh, at a reprimand or above, there, uh, there is a fine that is typically associated with, with that. There could also be, uh, recommended training or coursework, um, uh, in, in conjunction with any of the other, um, sanctions.
Is it possible that we can recommend training for the entire building?
I think that answer is no. I think we've, it's an individual case, I understand, I understand.
I understand, uh, in my opinion, we're in this position because there was not training and or reinforcement of that for the health, so, um.
I think.
Do we have that list of trainings?
Yes, ma'am, that was the information I sent this morning.
Okay, we got three, can you tell me?
So there should be one, a matrix, the other one I think is called the training guide. Is it called the training guide, okay.
Would you give me a second to find it, please?
So there, there are, sure, there are a wide array of trainings in that guide.
Right. Unfortunately, this is the process.
Ms. Newton.
I have a question, if you go with a, um, the different levels, can the trainings be, um, be, uh, required at any of the levels? Or are there certain levels the trainings come in at? Any level, okay.
Do you want to, do you want to get the conversation started, or do you have a motion?
I, I, um, I, I'll tell you what I'm looking at.
Just a moment, I might.
Sure.
It was one of the things that, it was one of the exhibit. Of the level of caution would be the exception, there is no training with the level of caution.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, um. So the then, um, a written warning is the, is the lowest determination with which any training can be associated.
Okay. I'll tell you what I'm leaning toward, and then y'all can discuss however you like. I, I, I'm, I've looked at the different qualifications as far as, um, what this meets, and I'm looking at a, a written reprimand with two additional trainings. That, uh, um, behavior is communication and classroom management managing challenging behavior. That's kind of where I ended up.
Okay.
With the appropriate fine.
Okay, and, um, the fine. Is it?
It's fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars is generally associated with that, although y'all, y'all can make a different, different determination, but fifty dollars is the typical, um, associated fine. Ms. Newton, would you, do you want to?
I didn't know if you wanted more discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna see if we wanted a motion before, if, just to get the conversation started. Do y'all have?
Yes. We'll take a three calls there.
Okay.
Unfortunately, um, the difficulty is that at the time of this, I'm sorry.
Please come back.
Yes, at the time of this incident, a written warning was a potential sanction. However, as of that time, it is no longer, um, a potential sanction.
Because of the change in the rules.
Yes, and so I need to talk through and evaluate how we need to address that. Because as of today, you cannot issue a written, written reprimand.
So.
It is no longer a, a, a potential sanction. The rules have changed to where it is no longer encompassed as a sanction. So I need to have a moment to, to talk through how we need to handle this.
Okay, you want to, let's take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're, we'll return on this last issue.
All right, so we, uh, we need, uh, just a refresher on where we are. Ms. Newton, your, 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 your motion, your attempted motion was?
A written reprimand with the two courses, uh, behavior is communication, and I can give the course numbers if you need those, and classroom management managing challenging behavior with a fifty dollar fine.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we, we have a mo- a, a, a motion and a second. Miss, I'm gonna turn to Ms. Taylor, and is that a, is that a proper motion? Okay? And that, that motion is out of, uh, the, the, the sanction is out of the current operating rules related to, uh, not the, not the rules that were in place at the time of the, of the incident. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that Mr. Campbell wanted to make a quick comment for the record.
Yeah, this is just for the purposes of preserving our record. Um, I would just argue that the disciplinary matrix that was in place at the time of the event and at the time of the initial hearing where a discipline was first imposed should continue to be the same disciplinary matrix that's used here. Just generally speaking, as a procedural matter, there's, you're not allowed to change the, the possible sanctions or discipline that somebody could face sort of midstream. Once the event happened, that disciplinary matrix was locked in and should be what we're working under. You know, would be my argument in general. I think since reprimand is on both, it's not as much of an issue. It would've been the issue had the original motion been warning. I would also just remind, uh, just because I don't know that I figure I've lost, in the three-month suspension, uh, that was already served, um, Ms. Bennett did have to undergo, um, three training courses totaling about six hours, which include, included classroom management, uh, healthy relationships with students, and she also underwent a psychological evaluation by order of the school board, just for context. Thank you.
Great, okay. Um, Ms. Newton, does that change any of your?
No, I think, and can I add to that, uh, written reflection to go along with the course?
Okay. All right, so your motion is a written reprimand, a fine of fifty dollars, the two courses that you articulated along with a written reflection. Okay? Um, that, is that second, do you second that alteration?
Yes, but it, uh, wasn't written reprimand an option at the time she, of the incident?
Yes, it was.
So it still is.
It's the warning that was the problem.
Oh, the word warning, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we are, we are in sync in terms of, um, I will, I will just note, I'm not, we can certainly fine, uh, at whatever level, the, the fine typically associated with reprimand now would be a hundred dollars, but it's fined at, is that correct? Up to a hundred?
You provide up to.
Okay, so we're, so that's, uh, just to be clear on that. Okay, um, is there, uh, further discussion of the motion? Anybody? All right, let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, I wanna thank, uh, I wanna thank the board for grappling with some very tough issues in a tough way. I wanna thank both attorneys for your professionalism, uh, today, um, and, um, and so I think it, what was, could've been a very difficult situation was made easier by, uh, the way in which y'all handled the case, and I appreciate, um, Ms. Bennett for being here as well, uh, and wish you the best of luck, uh, as you continue your career. Are we done? Anything else?
I will draft the order that is in line with the decision.
Okay.
And I'll get, I'll try to get that before you leave. Where are we on that, too?
Okay. All right, okay. Um, then I think we are ready for some lunch. And so, uh, let's, let's return at one fifteen, just to give everybody a close call.
All right, good afternoon. We are back with a couple of action agenda items this afternoon. The first one is a set of decisions from the charter authorizing panel for amendment requests that are tied to standards of accreditation.
Thank you, Dr. Barth. Alexandra Boyd, interim charter school director. On July 1st, 2018, new standards for accreditation became effective, necessitating a transition in waivers from the previous standards for accreditation. On September 19th, 2018, ADE staff appeared before the charter authorizing panel requesting approval of the transition of these waivers on behalf of several charter schools. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the state board of education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The state board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing of the charter authorizing panel's determination at the state board's next meeting. So just as a reminder, the decision today is to review or not review.
And can, is it your sense we can do this with one motion for the entire set?
Yes, the panel, that's the way the panel approved it.
Okay, great. I'll start over here. Any questions, Ms. McFetrich, or anyone else on the side? Any questions over here? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to review or to not review these decisions.
Move to not review, second.
All right, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. I will remind board members that you're certainly welcome to email Ms. Dedman with your own comments as a member of the public.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was quick.
Can we do reports today?
Well, I think we know we can't do them all today, so why don't we just have a nice afternoon, and I'm sure people have work to do, and so we will, here we go.
Don't tell anyone we finished before 1:30.
Anyway, I think this is the earliest we've ever finished, so here we go. We will be here, obviously, dinner tonight, hopefully, with most of you, and then we will be here tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and we have a set of reports, including some external constituents as well. We'll be here. Anything else you need to say?
Nothing I need to say. I'm looking at my team to see if we have anything else.
I wonder if any board members need the address of TRIOs so they know how to get there from out of town.
I'm not going to dinner, but I didn't even get the email about dinner, so.
Okay, and dinner is at 6:30?
It was in the midst of another one.
6 o'clock?
Okay.
It's at 6 o'clock, okay. So 6 o'clock, and we will see you there, and if you need address, it's, can you resend it? Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll see you in the morning if you're not there tonight, but we hope to see most of you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. I will remind board members that you're certainly welcome to email Ms. Dedman with your own comments as a member of the public.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was quick.
Can we do reports today?
Well, I think we know we can't do them all today, so why don't we just have a nice afternoon, and I'm sure people have work to do, and so we will, here we go.
Don't tell anyone we finished before 1:30.
Anyway, I think this is the earliest we've ever finished, so here we go. We will be here, obviously, dinner tonight, hopefully, with most of you, and then we will be here tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and we have a set of reports, including some external constituents as well. We'll be here. Anything else you need to say?
Nothing I need to say. I'm looking at my team to see if we have anything else.
I wonder if any board members need the address of TRIOs so they know how to get there from out of town.
I'm not going to dinner, but I didn't even get the email about dinner, so.
Okay, and dinner is at 6:30?
It was in the midst of another one.
6 o'clock?
Okay.
It's at 6 o'clock, okay. So 6 o'clock, and we will see you there, and if you need address, it's, can you resend it? Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll see you in the morning if you're not there tonight, but we hope to see most of you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hyder, or, oh, Ms. Dedman, are you up? Okay, so the ADE rules governing federal program complaint resolution.
Good morning, afternoon, I guess. Jennifer Dedman for the department. These are rules that we have not amended since 2010. The changes that you'll see are due to ESSA mostly. It does include a new section toward the end regarding equitable services for private school children, and that is probably the biggest change. You'll see the McKinney-Vento Act was struck from Section 1.03, and that's because there's separate guidance. On McKinney-Vento, these rules don't actually apply to that, so I believe that's the majority of the changes that were made, and the department will respectfully request that you release these for public comment.
Okay, so any questions or comments? To my right, to my left. All right, then I would entertain a motion for release for public comment on these items, on this item.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. I will remind board members that you're certainly welcome to email Ms. Dedman with your own comments as a member of the public.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was quick.
Can we do reports today?
Well, I think we know we can't do them all today, so why don't we just have a nice afternoon, and I'm sure people have work to do, and so we will, here we go.
Don't tell anyone we finished before 1:30.
Anyway, I think this is the earliest we've ever finished, so here we go. We will be here, obviously, dinner tonight, hopefully, with most of you, and then we will be here tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and we have a set of reports, including some external constituents as well. We'll be here. Anything else you need to say?
Nothing I need to say. I'm looking at my team to see if we have anything else.
I wonder if any board members need the address of TRIOs so they know how to get there from out of town.
I'm not going to dinner, but I didn't even get the email about dinner, so.
Okay, and dinner is at 6:30?
It was in the midst of another one.
6 o'clock?
Okay.
It's at 6 o'clock, okay. So 6 o'clock, and we will see you there, and if you need address, it's, can you resend it? Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll see you in the morning if you're not there tonight, but we hope to see most of you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor say aye.
I see spits. Turn around.
Yeah, I'll go take a shower.